Okay, now you've had the opportunity to serve on the commission. And give us a little synopsis of some of the work that you've done and what you'd like to be able to do in your reappointment.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. I have been a member of the Environmental Affairs Commission now for a little bit less than two years. And during that time, we have as a commission worked on, you know, supporting a lot of the programs and policies that the department has worked on, particularly around implementing the mayor's Green L.A. plan, the city's Green L.A. plan, to some of the programs that we've looked at has been the Green Business Certification Program, as well as the recent adoption by the council, we worked on the environmental purchasing policy, so...
Hold just a second, I want to, for the record, Mr. Cardenas is here with us. And we have one more, then we can go back and ratify everything. Okay, go ahead. We're on item number one. On the one, we can send it by.
Five, six, and seven.
Five, six, and seven.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. No, that's okay, thank you. So, a lot of our work has been really bringing together, working with the mayor's staff and other staff to bring together the objectives and goals of the Green L.A. plan, and then working with the department to begin developing the baseline by which we're going to judge kind of future, you know, reviews and potential assessments. And so what we've done recently is actually as a commission with the department, work to develop our work plan for 2009 and '10. And some of the things that we are going to be focused on is working very closely with the mayor's office as well as with the council to kind of do an assessment on where the various departments and priorities are in their sustainability plans, which directly link back to the Climate L.A. plan, which is, the goal is to help reduce the kind of carbon footprint of the city. And also, within that context, not only look at kind of where the departments are in meeting those plan objectives, but then what kinds of policies, recommendation we can develop, and potentially any ordinance recommendations we can develop. So, our focus this next year, as part of the work plan that we hope to adopt in the next month or so, will be to kind of establish a process by which the department can work with all the other departments to make sure that in fact those sustainability plans are moving forward, and then within that context, you know, come to the council and the mayor's office with recommendations on how the city can continue to move forward.
Okay, sounds like your work's cut out for you for the next year and a half.
Yes.
Mr. Cardenas, do you have any questions for our reappointee?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
We don't have form yet, but I'm sure it'll work out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll back and ratify it if someone else comes. And thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we are going to go on to...
Do you like to wait until the controller shows up?
Why don't we, is there anybody here from the controller's office right now?
Yeah.
Why don't you, can you start it, get us started?
Sure, the controller will be up here in about thirty seconds.
Okay, all right. All right, why don't you read the item?
Okay.
And then we'll have Dr. Williams come up.
Okay, certainly. Item number two.
This is the study today.
Item number two is a joint communication from the mayor, controller, council president, relative to the Industrial Economic Administrative Survey, the Department of Water and Power, conducted by P.A. Consulting.
Come on up, Dr. Williams. And if we need to kill time, I'll have you just do all of them. So, what's the good word? Okay, great. Thanks. Go ahead.
For public comment.
Oh, no, no, we're doing item two, so you're talking, you're talking on item two right now, I'll get public comment at the end.
Okay. Item two.
Go ahead.
Okay, just one, make sure. Okay, item two. DWP has yet to develop their strategic plan. So, the incorporation of the IEA should be with the strategic plan. It seems like a reasonable thing to do. They've been studying the strategic plan for a long time, and have not really incorporated either the desires of the commissioners of the Board of Water and Power and/or the IEA recommendations. Therefore, I would suggest that it be continued until they get the strategic plan finalized or approved by the Board of Water and Power. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Humphreiville, come on up.
This is IEA survey, general comment.
Number, yeah. Number two.
Number two.
Yes.
My name is Jack Humphreiville, I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council, and a member of the DWP Committee and the DWP Oversight Committee. I sent all of you earlier today a list of questions that I thought would be appropriate to ask for the, in connection to P.A. Consulting in association with their IEA survey. They include talking about the timing, efficiencies, benchmarking, and various other matters that I think are very important, including the financial analysis of the solar plan. In that regard, back in March 25th, the, your committee asked the DWP to provide an outreach plan within a month. At this point in time, we have not seen that plan. And we think it would be important for the, for your committee to have a better understanding of what the city, what the DWP and the mayor are contemplating with regards to this, this plan. In particular, some of the concerns are the mayor's recent pronouncements contrary to the IEA survey recommendations of no coal by 2020, and forty percent renewables by 2020, and sixty percent by 2030. Those are financially impossible. I'd appreciate it if we could get the IEA survey consultants to give us some comments on that. The last point is, I think it would be very helpful if the, if P.A. Consulting would conduct an open forum for various, for the ratepayers in the neighborhood councils, ratepayers including not only the residential people, but commercial, industrial, and institutional, where we can have a presentation of their findings, as well as an open question and answer period. Thank you.
Hey, let me ask you a question about that.
Yeah.
That's an interesting idea. When we have done open forums in the past, though, we don't get great attendance, but what would you think of maybe a forum online with places where people to go in and do, you know, two-way visual communication?
I'm not a, I'm not a webby, I don't know how webinars...
I mean, in city buildings.
What I was actually, what I was actually thinking about on that is getting the, somebody like the Chamber of Commerce, having them host a forum in their building where they have ample opportunities in various, very...
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking about citywide, that's all. Maybe we won't get citywide that way.
Oh, absolutely, you can. If you, if you have some of these web programs, you certainly can do it citywide. That shouldn't be a problem at all.
Maybe we can do a mixture of both.
No, but it just, you know, but just an open, you know, open question where people, you know, they can present their findings as opposed to consultant talk, maybe like normal people think.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Maybe on a Saturday afternoon?
Yeah, whatever.
Something like that?
Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, whatever's easiest for you.
After nine, twelve, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Solidad Garcia.
Thank you, good afternoon. Basically, the same theme, but just a little bit of a different twist. Yes, the IEA is an important document, we have been looking forward to it and had been asking for it for a couple of years before it finally came to fruition. We saw and heard a summary when Laura Chick was here. The neighborhood councils and the community as a whole would certainly benefit from a forum, and I don't know that it has to be, I just assume it's the in-house people, our own people who have a good understanding of what's happening, but it should be shared with everyone in its entirety, not just in a, in selected forms, but everything put together. I think it can be done, it would lend for transparency certainly, and for comparative purposes on what they're doing and what was recommended, that would be wonderful, and we could go from there and see what we could do to improve our, all of our situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that marks the end of the cards that we have on item number two, so I'll invite the controller up to come and make a presentation to us, that's fine, at this time. Thank you very much for your public comment. And Mr. Williams, I've got you for the other ones, three, four, and public comment, so anybody who wants to comment on the subsequent items, get them in as soon as you can. Okay, now, our presentation from the city controller.
Thank you, nice to be here, my first time as the city controller before this committee, opposite on being on this committee previously, and thank you, and I will be brief, this was a, as indicated, this is a IEA, which happens, the charter requires the controller's office to perform an Industrial Economic and Administrative Survey of our proprietary departments every five years, and this is the 2008, 2009 summary, you know, survey of the Department of Water and Power. We are in the midst actually of going to begin doing an IEA for the Harbor Department very soon as well. And this survey, I know, came out a little bit in, in March, actually prior to even the election occurring, and Controller Chick at the time held a meeting with many of the stakeholders that are here today to really give a briefing of what was included in this, and so there has been some coverage and discussion, but this being the first time the official document is coming here, as well as going to the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee. The survey raises many important issues, including some of the successes and the failures of this department that they have achieved since the prior IEA, which was done in 2003. It also provides a broad perspective on some of the challenges facing DWP, and how they are equipped to continually building what I know we feel is very important, the city's future needs. It does show that DWP has responded and made great strides from the 2003 recommendations, but still has a lot of work to do. I know that they're working on their own strategic plan, DWP is, to guide its implementation of many of the recommendations. And for the public as here, you may have seen, they did do a response, which is on the city's website, it'll be included in the controller's office in the future as well, dated March 2nd. Some of the issues they bring up is about the Integrated Resource Plan, as well as looking at our policies related to water, many of which we are, you are dealing with today. Talks about repowering, the need to repower DWP's asset portfolio, continue to provide a reliable water supply during a period in which the reliability of our existing major supplies are diminished. Talks about the IT systems, and outdated they are, and the need to select and successfully implement an IT overhaul, and also to manage the various human capital challenges. Lastly, just to mention a plan to make the supply chain and procurement process more efficient, which would save precious taxpayer dollars. Other key issues that will help guide, and it gives, P.A. Consulting talks about this through the process, was a governance issues involving the board composition and the need for changes and improvements as to a strategic plan and analysis processes. And lastly, it calls for additional progress towards more reliable water and power service with better transparency and more accountability for the fees that our city residents are seeing. And I know that DWP doesn't agree with all of the recommendations, but it is my hope that they will, the report will serve as a document that can guide the department on the right track to making some of those critical changes needed, and to ensure that the people who are here, again, the individuals who have testified on numerous occasions, whether it be through the MOU, or through their interest on the issues that have been facing DWP, that kind of transparency and involvement. And so with that, I will, I will stop my comments, but just did want to give you a brief overview there, and ask, if you're ready, Madam Chair, for P.A. Consultants who performed the survey to make the official presentation.
Yes, I'd like that very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm Andrew Ray, I'm a partner with P.A. Consulting, the head of the Los Angeles office, and I led the IEA effort on DWP. The IEA for DWP had two main purposes. One was to look at the previous report that was done in 2003, to look at the issues that were identified in that report, and to measure progress against the specific issues and recommendations that were done, and to see whether or not all of the issues that were raised in the 2003 report were still relevant, whether they were the right ones to focus on. It was also to look at the current environment, and see what the strategic challenges and opportunities facing the department are today, whether or not those were the same issues identified in 2003, or if new issues have arose, or previous issues had changed in their magnitude and importance. I'm going to deal more with the latter in my comments, and I'll just touch upon the first part. What we found were that progress against the previously identified items was somewhat inconsistent. And while you might say, well, that's not particularly good, in some cases, the department had correctly identified that some of those issues were no longer relevant, the world had changed. Certainly in the issues of renewable standards, progress had accelerated far faster than anyone would have anticipated in 2003, and there was an appropriate shift in focus towards that, that wasn't really a key priority in the 2003 findings. So I think the department exercised judgment in looking at what were the critical issues. So we found in some cases, some issues that were identified as important, really were no longer as critical as they once were, that's detailed in the report, new issues had arisen, some issues that we did deem to be of high importance, I would say insufficient progress had been made. The most noticeable, and it was mentioned earlier in some of the comments, was the progress on an integrated strategic plan, and on an integrated resource plan on the power system. When we first started our effort at DWP, there was not a strategic planning document and a strategic planning framework, or a strategic planning discipline in place. Over the course of the time that we were there, that effort did begin, and I believe progress has been made since we have completed our work. At the very end of our, of our effort, a strategic planning process was underway. As we talked about in the report, it's more than starting the process for the first time, it's really adopting a management discipline of, on a regular basis, casting a strategic framework, prioritizing, drilling that down into all pieces of the information, and then creating performance plans and tactical plans that are driven from the strategic plan. So, when we started the work, I would say, very little progress had been made on that front. It was certainly underway when we left, I can't tell you how much progress has been made since we've left, in that particular case. We do think having a strategic planning framework and a discipline is absolutely critical, because as we say in the report, we do think the department is facing unprecedented challenges and change. And when we look at what the biggest strategic challenge facing the department is, it's really the magnitude of change, and the importance of it. And I'll give some examples that we highlight in the report. One, the department is really changing its power makeup. It's moving from a relatively static system that if you were really to oversimplify, you could almost say it's like an extension cord. The department owned most of its generation previously, it controlled it, and it was able to contract for supplemental needs, but it wasn't a preponderance of the system. As you move to very high percentages of renewable power, one, those are going to be partly owned by the department and partly contracted for. Those resources vary in how effective they are at meeting the load shape of the department. So the load shape is, when are there peak demands, and when are there not peak demands? So in order to shape that load, you have to bring on other types of generation, usually now, for environmental reasons, gas-fired generation. So you have a lot of contracts, a lot of contracted power, a much more dynamic system, and it's a huge change to make in a very short period of time. And renewable power is presently, and likely to be for a considerable period of time, quite a bit more expensive than conventional power, and much more, requires much more skill to manage, and contract for. There's also much more competition for it in California, it's a very scarce resource. So all the investor-owned utilities, as well as other large municipal power companies, are trying to contract for that. So to shift from the type of generation portfolio DWP had, to what it's moving towards in such a short period of time, is a sort of once-in-a-lifetime event. So it's huge, it would be enough for any management team to handle that alone. At the same time, the department has very antiquated information systems and information technology. It has systems that are written in a programming language called COBOL, only very few people are able to maintain COBOL systems. It's a, it's very costly, it's very slow, you go, look across the board, accounting systems, billing systems, customer information, call center technology, the department has a huge information technology effort to upgrade.
Let me, let me help you move the pace of...
Absolutely.
Just like renewables, you know, we have aggressively changing markets shifting right under our feet, and you're right, we do have an antiquated communication system, our infrastructure within our own department hasn't kept pace with the marketplace itself. And I guess you ID the primary issue as one of change, which is sort of theoretical, and then again it isn't. Because if you choose one element of what you're talking about, I guess the biggest element would be the way we do business and transmit information in response to the marketplace, and how do we change that?
You, what you're really talking about is a cultural transformation. So, one of the, one of the other critical areas we highlight is human capital, how you manage human capital. So, DWP is in a much more competitive environment than it's ever been, competing for resources that are scarce, that are very, very high price, and requires different skill sets, different talents, much higher emphasis on energy trading will be required in the future. And right now, one of the areas that we highlight is, all of the employees, except for a small number of exempt employees, are in the civil service, and subject to the civil service rules, which affects the department's ability to attract the most highly skilled resources and procure the lowest-cost services.
So when you talk about that, we have not only an aging workforce...
Mm-hmm.
People working longer now because they have to...
Right.
An overloaded pension system. What sort of recommendations have you given that DWP can reasonably implement, say, within a one-to-five-year timeframe, on civil service requirements, and just requirements and recognition of an aging workforce, so that we don't have, end up with a totally top-heavy organization with a system where people actually, we can't afford to let them retire because we can't afford to service their pensions?
Yeah. I think, two things, I think on the aging workforce issue, I think the department's very focused on it. I think there's a lot of attention, and they are actively trying to bring in, particularly at the lower ranks, engineers, people at a faster rate. And I think there is a high recognition they have that. I think where more progress needs to be made is opening up the number of exempt positions from a handful, literally, to hundreds. And that's going to require cooperation from the city council, and the mayor's office, the unions, and all of that.
And that means opportunities for people at the bottom end, then? Or what does that mean?
I think it means opportunities relate at all levels. Some of these positions, particularly on energy management, are highly skilled, or energy trading, highly skilled. So you're talking about bringing people in at middle and upper levels for those, as well as lower entry-level positions. One of our recommendations was to expand the fuel procurement and fuel management, and so to start to bring in schedulers and people at a lower level, and right now, those are civil service positions, so you can't bring experienced people in from industry for those.
So, and is that in response to being able to get the best price in the marketplace faster with more staff that's more attuned to that, because it's such a specialized operation?
Absolutely, it's akin to having someone who had great familiarity with the airports do commodity trading. That's the situation where, right now, you can have people bid from any city department into highly skilled and highly specialized jobs. There's a high level of expertise with those particular things, that becomes more and more important as the department's generation mix shifts.
Just hold for a second, Mr. Garcetti is here with us now, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to go back and ratify, I think, five, six, seven, and one?
Yeah.
Without objection.
Okay.
Okay, great. Please proceed.
Okay. Excuse me.
We're on, sure.
On number six, report back from the department.
Okay, yeah, you want to report back in the department?
Yeah.
Can we amend that?
Sure, certainly.
Okay, great.
Report back from EAD with regard to...
Yeah, regarding these two questions, will a consultant be hired for the specific tasks of the facility reports? And then second, which facility reports will be evaluated?
Okay.
Okay. All right, back to P.A. Consulting, we were talking about human capital.
So I think you captured what our overarching observation is, which it's the magnitude of each of those individual changes, and the fact that the department has to manage all of them at the same time. That would be an incredibly daunting task for any company, private or public. And its impact on the city is significant. If you look at the higher costs of procuring renewable resources, the higher risk associated with managing a much more dynamic generation fleet, and if you look at how the city has apportioned out rate increases, you have the potential for much higher rates. The department has used a mechanism called the ECAP, which is basically a balancing account for over and under collections of revenues and payments. And the impact of higher-cost renewables, and some of the other programs, including technology that the department has to do, you have to either pay for those through rate increases or bonds, and one way or another, they're all going to eventually end up back into the bill, the customer bill. So, one of the real challenges we see facing the department is, how do you manage the change and pay for the change in a way that doesn't create enormous amount of rate shock? And right now, renewable generation being considerably more expensive, likely to continue for a considerable period of time, you have the potential for significantly higher rates well into the future, or a huge sort of balloon payment at the back end.
Okay. Do you want to go into the governance?
You know, I think we highlighted in the report that we don't think the governance structure is optimum at this particular point in time.
Talk a little bit about your perceptions on the politicization, the politics of the department and its effect on strategic operational decisions, and your perceptions on that.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like, on that note, I'd like to read a couple of sentences from the report, so you can specifically answer, I think, that same question. It says, "In addition, the influence of other key stakeholders, most importantly, the mayor's office, to set policy direction requires an independent and rigorous analysis. The absence of such analysis can lead to the apparent politicization of key decisions whereby the quote, 'go-no-go' end quote decision around any initiative is influenced by highly qualitative factors, rather than rigorous analysis of cost and benefit." And it also goes on to say, "The current governance framework puts achievement of long-term goals squarely at risk." What do you mean by that?
One of the areas where we think the department could improve is its ability to make analytically fact-based decisions, to use economic models, mathematical models... fact-based decisions, to use economic models, mathematical models, power market modeling, all of the type of things that we'd look at. And this also goes into creating a really effective integrated resource plan on the power side. The department is sort of behind what we would call leading municipal electric utilities and certainly investor-owned utilities in its use of econometric and market modeling. And so when initiatives come up, whether they be on the renewable side or conventional generation or asset sales, such as in the coal divestiture, the department doesn't have, or certainly didn't have when we were doing the report, the ability to make sound fact-based decisions. In the absence of sound fact-based decisions, it's much more easier, it's certainly easier to go with the flow, to react to specific initiatives that are suggested by a variety of stakeholders. We certainly saw evidence of the lack of analytical capabilities and tools that we think led to suboptimal decision-making.
And is that what you mean when you refer to qualitative decision-making as opposed to-
Quantitative decision-making, yes.
Quantitative, uh-huh. Okay. So what are your recommendations? Those are so noted and well noted and appreciated. And what do you, what do you recommend from a, I guess, from a governance model, structure standpoint, what do you think should change?
I think the-
How would you change it?
So I would, I would create, in the finance organization of the department, I would create basically a quantitative analysis group. And that group would have the ability to do econometric modeling of projects. It would also be able to do scenario analysis so that for each project that was suggested, the impact long-term on rates, the impact long-term on capital, the impact on the department's bond ratings could all be looked at in a much more fluid and integrated way. And once you have those models in place, it's relatively speedy compared with the process today. The other group that we'd recommend would be a similar quantitative group in the, in the generation group that would do sophisticated market modeling and sophisticated power modeling.
Let me ask you a question about that. We have a chief legislative analyst here in the city and we have a chief administrative officer and all of, all of the staffs there are assigned to different departments and they develop their level of expertise. And obviously, we rely on CAOs who have a strong expertise in Department of Water and Power matters. Are you suggesting that this is something above and beyond that because it's so tightly defined? Or is this something that we could create without having to add more employees?
I think on the power market modeling, it's a level of sophistication that's very difficult to just sort of start from scratch. So I think certainly the lead in that organization, you'd want someone with experience, there's a suite of models that are commonly in use in industry and having the expertise to not only run them but maintain them because they're very data-intensive and even more importantly to interpret them. I think that probably does require additional resources. Can that person train existing employees? I would think the right employees with the right sort of analytical capabilities, certainly. You know, it's obviously for you and the department to judge whether it's best to have those resources in the department or to have them in other city organizations. I'd say their effectiveness might increase actually if they were in the department. And the department really needs to have, to be able to lean on that type of analytical talent on a real-time basis.
Okay. Oh, yeah, all right. Well, then tell me about your perspectives, the report's perspectives on strategic planning and an approach to capital allocation and risk assessment, and give us just a few ideas or thoughts about what other firms have done in a manner that has been successful and whether or not you believe the department can accomplish something similar, successful model. If you can give us some examples of that.
So I mean, I think, you know, the absence of a strategic plan is sort of like the, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. I think there, there's a lot of truth in that statement. I think the department, as we mentioned, and it was noted in the 2003 report, doesn't have a culture of strategic planning. And while it's moving forward now, to get people to really buy into that process will take a considerable period of time. It's not a switch you turn on and off. I think making that cultural shift is absolutely important because, you know, we've talked about the critical issues facing the department. The department is in many ways leading in the United States in terms of its commitment to renewable generation. It's a very bold plan, a very bold set of goals. The plan to get there needs to be equally bold, and I'd say right now, it's not anywhere near as robust. So I'd say it's absolutely important that for all facets, and I've highlighted the power, but it's equally true on the water side, that there really be a long-term plan that goes out at least five years, that gets updated on a yearly basis based on changes in the environment, and that that's how the department manages its way forward. The priorities are set by the plan, budgets are allocated. We talked, you talked about the capital allocation process. One of the issues that we observed is that projects continually get added to the department's list, very few projects get taken away. So what happens is there's not really a great emphasis on prioritization and cost-benefit analysis. So too many projects get in the hopper, resource, resources are strained, it's hard to do that many projects well, and it's hard to meet their budget. We think an integrated strategic planning process tied to the budgeting process will make that a much more effective process.
Okay.
I'd say right now, the department is very budget-focused and not very strategic or planning-focused.
A budget-reduction-focused.
Right. It's reactive, although on the, on the capital side, their capital budget is, you know, is increasing significantly in order to accommodate the renewable program and other, other programs.
Okay. Before I go to the DWP side, my colleagues, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, and thank you for the report as well.
You're welcome.
The, as I think we've stated here a number of times, that, you know, our shared goal, I think, on the council is to deliver clean, reliable water and power to the ratepayers at a reasonable rate and that conserves and helps protect our environment. And I think the survey brings up a number of questions about the department's ability to do that. Over the past several years, we've had some questions from blackouts, questions about procurement of renewable resources and a whole bunch of other ones that have popped up. I think the ability to implement much of what you detail in here really starts at the top, and admittedly, the constant merry-go-round of general managers has made that difficult and board members. It's probably quite difficult to have a consistent plan of attack. In some ways, we've had a more stable council than we've had a department. But with stable leadership over the last, past year and a half, though, we see some promising signs. I think the rapid response on the water conservation ordinance that we are considering today. But we need to continue this pattern of better management. That's something I definitely pulled out from this. A better response to council offices, I think, is something, I don't want to speak for the other ones, but better response to constituents, ratepayers that should be answered in a timely and more efficient manner. One thing that, that I pulled out of this, I think, is definitely to enforce better or reinforce better management, but we need more transparency, I think, from top to bottom at DWP. And there's always a fear about transparency, what are people actually at, going, going after? And I don't think we know what we're going after until we have transparency. That's part of the problem of it. But this means better communications with stakeholders on new initiative and ordinances coming down from water conservation to net metering. And we often pick up the, the, the lack of breadth and depth of that communication in here when it doesn't happen out there. It means a regularly updated IRP, not just, gosh, they're asking for us to report or you're looking at it, that marries renewable energy procurement to energy efficiency incentives. And one of the things that I didn't see a lot of, but one of my frustrations has been that there's so much emphasis in IRP on a number of things, but not on energy efficiency, which is, I think, really where we get a lot of bang for the buck, where we can all agree that we'll get better value for the ratepayer, do better by our environment, and achieve our goals. And one of the things also that I didn't see in there, but maybe you can speak to in a second, I have a few other points. But I recognize the increased expenses. One of the things that I've been frustrated sometimes from the department and other folks who have looked at costs is nobody knows, so everybody avoids the question of what carbon-based, you know, the cost of carbon's going to be. And so we can say, yes, if we froze time right now before what seems like federal legislation, we know state legislation, but somewhat inevitably, that carbon is going to cost us more in one way or another. And I really want to compare that apple with the apple of renewable energy, not the orange of today's cheap carbon sources with the apple of tomorrow's renewable energy. And I think federal carbon legislation or increased demand will continue to see us in that path pretty inevitably. As part of the process, I hope, Madam Chair, we can talk about building confidence that DWP is actively taking advantage of federal, local, and state incentive programs to develop its renewable resources and bargaining the best price possible for its consumers. And I think this report questions that ability. We need to see a lot more from the department that they can, before we fully put our faith in them, that they are doing so. Another example where communication, not just with council, but where the public will be helpful, is with water supply plan. I think there's a lot of willingness out there for people to be educated and to do their parts, but the average Angelino, which should be the only way we judge our success, still is not well briefed on this. And it doesn't matter how many pieces of mail we send, how many community meetings, we have to do a richer job of that. We understand the actions that are being taken, they're good ones on the waterfront, but we've not been apprised of the progress that have been made on any particular issue. So on the water plan, while it was better, it's kind of long on promises and short on specifics and benchmarks of how to assess that. And that's something else that, for me, came out from the report. So more communication, more information helps us to build that trust and place more confidence in the department. So I would ask, just as we look at this, in addition to implementing the recommendations in the report, that the department on a regular basis update council offices and neighborhood councils alike on the IRP, including the RPS, the water supply plan and other major initiatives. I think those constant meetings will, will be something that'll be good in terms of long-term reliability of the city's power and water supplies. And I think that, you know, that better accountability, really focusing on energy efficiency, looking at carbon costs and trying to find some way to even ballpark those, and getting more specific on the implementation of the water implementation plan would all be great things. But maybe on the carbon side, do you want to speak to that at all? Who's looking for stuff?
Well, I think you raised the issue entirely correctly. Meeting, meeting the, I don't know, the environmental goals of new carbon legislation, but the costs and transforming your generation fleet, not only to use renewables, but to use renewables that have the lowest and most beneficial carbon footprint, requires sophisticated modeling and sophisticated analysis. And right now, and I would say the department is not alone in this, there is just a rush to sign renewables. They're a very scarce resource, so if a quality project comes on, there's a lot of competition to sign it up. And it's like, whether it be wind or biomass or solar or whatever it is, it's like, let's get it now. And the type of analysis that you're suggesting isn't really happening. So it's sort of renewables as quickly as possible before someone else gets them, which also helps to drive the price up. And so I think the somewhat slower, but somewhat more rigorous assessment of what is the true cost of renewables and what are their carbon impacts is absolutely an essential part of how they should be procured. Otherwise, you, you pay a lot now and you pay even more later.
On that front, I mean, one of the things that, that I think I've argued as we look at, at our renewable portfolio standard though, too, is to wait or to only price this in the private marketplace, which often does have efficiencies that we don't, but often also has bottom-line requirements that a public utility doesn't. With our non-renewable power, for instance, we're able to provide a pretty cheap rate because of the ownership there, is to, to provide some sort of competition. My ideal scenario is neither public nor private, but it's both, in which we get some competition between the two. So, you know, there's, there are some high barriers to entry, but I think that if DWP doesn't figure out a way to own and operate a good portion of its renewables, we'll be dependent on a marketplace where we're either contracting this stuff out or in some cases paying a premium on them. Is that, is that something that you would agree with as well?
I think you're certainly in danger of paying a premium. We, we talk about it here, and one of the things we recommend is the department be given more flexibility in its procurement process. You're competing with Southern California Edison, Pacific Gas and Electric, all of the investor-owned utilities in, in the Southwest and the Pacific Northwest. They have much larger procurement groups. They are much more nimble, they can sign contracts much quicker, and you're at a disadvantage. That drives up your procurement costs. And anything you can do to sort of level the playing field, or in some cases, remove yourself from the playing field and still meet your goals, is probably your advantage. Because right now, you're at a fairly significant disadvantage.
Mm-hmm.
One thing that you touched on, on the transparency and regular reporting, it's, it's a key belief in ours in this report. We were really impressed with the tremendous cooperation we got from DWP. They worked with us side-by-side as we developed this, we had access to all of the information. So while not everything in our report is, you know, glowing, we felt like they really helped. We'd like to see the findings in this report become useful. One thing we learned with the 2003 study is, it was put on a shelf, partly the way the IEA process is designed. You know, we think, you've spent almost a million dollars on this report. We think, while not every single finding is agreed to by DWP, there's enough common ground that having some type of regular reporting for the council, the mayor, whomever it is, where DWP can update you on progress, we think is absolutely essential. That way, they'll stay focused.
Right.
It will increase transparency for you, and I think everyone will win.
Mm, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, on the governance issue, could you describe to me what your understanding is of what the decision-making structure is at the department and what the role is supposed to be between the city council and the mayor and the actual department?
I think within fairly broad parameters, DWP management makes most of the decisions that are impacting their day-to-day working operations with heavy involvement from their board. One of the governance issues we highlighted is that department management feels they are micromanaged by the board, and the board feels that they are not given full information and will cite specific examples of areas where they felt like the wrong decision was made, therefore, we can't give you greater flexibility on procurement decisions. So when we were doing the study, and there certainly have been some changes in the board makeup since then, I would, I would say the relationship was one of mutual, what's the right word? Neither party fully trusted the other. And I think so what you had was a micromanagement relationship between the board and the department, and a lot of frustration on the department's side in terms of, how can we do our job when we're not getting things approved on a timely basis? And I'd say there was points to be made from both sides. What we talk about in the report is it's suboptimal. You don't have a private company whose board of directors exercises that same level of micromanagement on management, and you don't have, in a well-run company, management not providing full information to its board. So we think that needs to change. How the-
If that needs to change, it's nice to point out that they're not running an optimum efficiency or structure, or they're not handling the structure at an optimum level. But what do you mean, that has to change? It's a pretty blanket statement. Give me an example of what should change.
I, I think-
Get rid of the board? Get rid of the management? Those are changes, pretty drastic.
I, I think it's an area where if the mayor exercised greater control and more, and provided more direction to both the board and the general manager about how he expects them to act and what they're responsible for, if there is a fully-vetted strategic plan that has been run up through the board, approved by the mayor, that basically gives the general manager his marching orders, therefore, the whole department, I think that's a much better governance structure. So one of the issues is, there's not an agreed framework for, here's what I, the general manager, am specifically responsible for, here's what my top executives are specifically responsible for. There's not that compact with that, with the board. When you don't have that, it's very easy for people to run off in different directions. So we think putting in much more of a best-practice management structure starts with a strategic plan that the mayor signs off on and the board signs off on, then the general manager develops a tactical plan that's based on that. We think that's the right governance structure for the department. And that really starts with the mayor providing that direction.
Now, when you said the mayor signs off on, then the board signs off on, who, in that example you gave, who would sign off first?
So I think the way that would, that we would recommend it- So I think the way that we would recommend it is that the department, led by the general manager, would develop the strategic plan. They would get information from all of the key stakeholders, which obviously includes the mayor, the board, the community, other critical stakeholders. They would develop that plan, they would then hold briefings with the board, briefings with the mayor. There'd be specifics. It would be not just a, lots of prose. It would have all of the quantitative analysis to back it up. It would have full budgets, it would talk about the capital programs that support the plan. It would be a comprehensive and rigorous document, so that when you sign off on it, you know what the department has said it's going to do for the next five years. Obviously, the world changes, and they're going to have to make adjustments, but when they do, they'll come and brief you and say, this is what we planned for, this is what's happened, here's how we need to change. So we think that's good governance, and we think that way, it helps create a no-surprises environment.
Yeah, I just noticed, you mentioned the mayor, you mentioned the board, you mentioned community stakeholders, but you never mentioned the city council, and that was part of my question. So in that structure, you left out the city council. Where does the city council play? We just stand there and read the daily news, the LA Times, and say, hmm, that's interesting what's going over at the DWP, secondhand, we hear about it after it's already done. I mean, what are you doing here?
I misspoke. It was my omission to leave the city council out. I think, obviously, you would be included in that.
No, but tell me, technically, as you understand it, we are ad hoc involved in this whole DWP, largest water and power district in the country, or we have formal role, or roles going on here as a city council, as an elected legislative body of the city of Los Angeles? What is the city council role in relationship to the department, in relationship to the board, in relationship to the mayor?
So I think if you really look at sort of the optimal governance structure, I think-
I'm talking about the interpretation of what the structure is written, based on the charter and based on this proprietary department. What is the structure as you understand it?
My understanding of the city council's role now is much more advisory or ad hoc.
No, that's not right.
No, no, go ahead. But my point is, now, help me understand-
That's what they want you to think.
Help me, help me, help me understand. See, I'm not, basically, what you need to understand is, you're with PA Consulting Group, right?
Yes.
I'm assuming that PA Consulting Group, before you engaged in this report, that you went ahead and read up on the city charter. You went ahead and read up on the actual formal realities of how the department was created, and what the purpose was, okay? And the latest charter revision that happened in the early 90s, where this proprietary department sits within relationship of the city charter. And therefore, understand what the legal and formal responsibilities are from the mayor, what the legal and formal responsibilities are of the board at the Department of Water and Power, what the legal and formal responsibilities are of the city council.
I thought you were asking me what we recommended.
What's that?
I thought you were asking me what we recommended in terms of governance.
No, I asked you what is your understanding of what it is.
I think it's a recommendation that the city council not be that involved.
Thank you. Thank you, though.
I'm not really sure I understand what you're specifically asking.
Okay. You were given the task of creating a report that the subject matter of the report is the Department of Water and Power of the city of Los Angeles, correct?
Yes.
And in that report, you analyze and opine on its efficiencies, its practices, what goes on in that department, what they could do better, what maybe they're not doing very well, perhaps even comparing it to custom and practices within the industry, et cetera. Is that along the lines of some of the things you do in this report?
Absolutely.
Okay, in order to do that, isn't it critical and/or important for you to understand what the legal responsibilities are of the department, and where they stand from a legal vantage point, as to who makes decisions at the department, what their discretion is, what their limitations are or not, and therefore, who actually has a hand in the department as well?
Yeah, and we talk about specifically in terms of the general manager or other members, their ability to approve contracts of a certain size.
Sure.
What contracts have to come before the city council. We talk about those specific issues in here. But also remember, what we were asked to do is talk about, to make recommendations to how we think it should work. And I would say, most of this report is really focused on, how can we make it better? That was really what we were asked to do.
Well, let me give you an example of something that you touched on several times in your discourse here today to this committee, the city council committee. You mentioned the renewable portfolio standard. You mentioned new energy sources, cleaner energy sources. Well, when I was in the state legislature, representatives from the Department of Water and Power of Los Angeles made comment to a committee that I was on, that was contemplating what we were going to do and require of all energy providers within the state of California. And what we did is, we separated the independent operators and the municipal operators. And based on what the largest municipal operator in the state of California told us, that they were on their way to actual creating a renewable portfolio standard and inking one for their purposes, in other words, a guideline and an objective over the coming years, like you've touched on as well in your report. And so what happened, coincidentally, unbeknownst to me at the time, I agreed with them, not knowing that I was going to become a city council member later on. I got on the city council a few years later, and then when I happened to chair the committee that oversaw the Department of Water and Power on behalf of the city council, I asked them the question, and I was very happy to ask the question. I said, I would love to see your renewable portfolio standard. You know, a few years ago, I was in the state legislature, and you gave a report to our committee that you were working on it way back then. You must be done with it by now. And they said, we don't have one. And I said, where is it? And they said, well, it's in the thought process, but it's not in any working phase yet. It's not even on paper yet. So what I did is, I drafted a motion, seconded by the now-president of the city council, Eric Garcetti, and we went ahead and moved the Department of Water and Power to look internally and actually do what they said that they were going to do, do what they claimed that they wanted to do, do what they said it is good for themselves and the constituents of the city of Los Angeles and their customers. And we finally got them to ink a renewable portfolio standard. So, that being the case, based on that example, was the council exercising a particular formal legal role, or we were just kind of imposing ourselves, and we have no role?
I'm not a lawyer, and I'm certainly not an expert on interpreting the city charter, so I think you would know the answer to that far better than I would. I think what you were doing was taking action that you thought was appropriate, and I think that's part of the management process. I think, should the council's role be more clearly defined in the strategic planning process? Absolutely, because that way you'll be given information as it's being developed, you'll have the opportunity to comment on it. It's, I think, far better for it to be an interactive process than a frustration process, which sounds a little bit more like what you've described.
Well, the interesting thing about it is, the reason why I'm going on and on, and I'll be done in a second, Madam Chair, is that you, when I asked you a specific question, you ended up describing a bilateral relationship. You had a mayor and a department, and for some reason, you forgot that there is a trilateral relationship amongst the city electeds and the department. And there's another community, which is the consumers and the actual owners of the Department of Water and Power. But you lightly touched on the fourth, you didn't touch on the third at all. And so the reason why I've gone on for a few minutes is, it disturbs me that you've spent all this time on this report, but you seem to have not understood that the city council does have a role. For example, the commission at the Department of Water and Power, if they act with a vote of any kind, then that matter immediately becomes subject to being brought into the purview of the council. And therefore, we can negate that vote and reject it, or we can go ahead and affirm that vote and allow it to happen.
I think I was aware of that, and as I said, I misspoke when I didn't mention the city council. One of the joint administrators who administered all of our work represented the city council in this effort. They were involved in all of the meetings that we held. We met on a bi-weekly basis, a representative was there. So I apologize for making the omission, but we were clearly aware of it, and we worked closely with representatives of the city council as we did the report, and their input was key to what we did.
But what you described, and what I read earlier, you point out about the influence of other key stakeholders, and you said, and you put, most importantly, the mayor's office to set policy directions, et cetera, and then you described the absence of analysis. Now, that's an example of either influence or pressures or what have you, that result in not-so-good actions. Because one of the things I want to point out before, I'll let the chair know that I'm done with my comments, is that one thing that I want to make very clear, and something that I'm very proud of, of the city council of Los Angeles since I've been here for the last six years, is that when we ask the department to do something, we don't ask them to omit. We ask them to show us more information. We ask them to bring us more analysis. We ask them to prove to us what it is they're trying to do and what they're basing that on. Not asking them to say, hey, we love that idea, don't bother telling us the details or gathering the details. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is a, okay, this will be a note-and-file item, and we will request that the department report to this committee on a minimum quarterly basis on the status of implementing the recommendations contained in the report, and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a talk to you.
Next item is-
Madam Chair, items three and four, you could hear together. They both deal water shortage year rates.
And you know what I'm going to do, is I'm going to let the speakers come up first, and let them both come up. Dr. Williams, Dale Gibson, Solidad Garcia.
Okay.
Why don't we do that? It's called hotelitarianism. I was supposed to sit downstairs. All right, Dr. Williams, you're on.
Good afternoon. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Cerrano, Northeast LA. These are exemptions. These are variances. The Board of Water and Power, at their last meeting, sent back to the department the whole variance procedure. Horses and livestock, are they any better than what you've approved for maybe looking at exempting all of the high-fire zone area people? Exemptions. Who makes up the revenue-neutral costs? The people that don't have horses, the people that don't have livestock, the people that don't have high-fire vegetation? These are the balances. We have to come to some sort of reasonable allocations, but these seem to be in excess. My vegetation, last year, I cut over half of the foley job. Why? In order to reduce the evaporative losses. I've put in all sorts of various things. I've done about as much as possible, and we average about 50 gallons per person per day with vegetation. I do landscaping, i.e., I cut all of the landscaping that is within 200 feet of the house in order so that I don't get on fire, so that I don't have to irrigate. All of these things eventually means that the people that are, might say, at a lower elevation than I am, don't have to pay more for me. Again, livestock is a privilege. People who have livestock, I feel sorry for them, but just like any other farmer, any other rancher, they go out and they put down their livestock if they cannot water it. So as an example, I would say, send this back, make them do the right job, and make sure that whenever they have revenue-neutral, they show plus here, minus here.
Thank you. Let's see, I think Mrs. Garcia, or no, Dale is next. Solidad, you want to come on up? Solidad Garcia, why don't you come on up, too?
Hi, my name is Dale Gibson. I'm with the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. I'm a horse owner. I'm also vice president of the Los Angeles Horse Council. I guess, I'm a little shaken up by the last speaker. We of the Los Angeles Horse Council want to encourage you to modify the shortage year rates for equestrians and livestock owners. Many of our horse owner organizations have campaigned to license horses. You can now give the 20,000 to 25,000 horses in the city a reason to license for this hardship exemption. We, and I say we, I personally have been working with the DWP for several years now and trying to get access to reclaimed water. Our ranch CUPs demand dust mitigation of us. As I went down and spoke to the board one day, I said, I'm spraying clean water on the ground, and there is 8 million gallons of reclaimed water that we could be using. I was told that, well, there were purple pipes in Hanson Dam, and I was told that it was on the way. As of a week ago, they reneged, said the purple pipes are there, and it'll probably be two years before we get any reclaimed water in our area. We recycle a lot of our products, and we're trying to be green until the system allows us to use reclaimed water, which would make our ranches be green. And we even offered to truck it in ourselves, by the way. I would ask that you do give us the hardship exemption to be in fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Garcia?
Thank you. I live in San Pedro, not El Cerrano. I'm going to base this basically on the person and the group I feel will be hit the hardest, and that's a single-family dweller on a lot that is less than 7,500 feet. If you look at what they, at the allocation that they have, as compared to someone with a larger, in the same house, the same type of structure of the house, with fewer family and a larger lot, they get twice as much water allocation than those of us who are on this side of the 101. I just don't see that as being equitable. I think in 94, there was a Blue Ribbon Committee that said it should be based on 125%, as I read it, 125% of the median typical usage for customers. I don't see that happening. That would be nice. The availability of water and the equitability of water, I think, is very important, and there should be another look at that, based on the water availability. Larger houses and larger lots should be using, let's say, recycled water, where you have a humongous amount of water. The modification of the tiering, if you take a look at what our current tiering is from, that will be modified, 3.422, I would recommend that there be a 1.5, that would be in between the first and the second, so that the impact for the single-family dweller would not be hit as hard. So it'd be go from 3.4, 4.45, to 5.48, as it will be going, and probably further. You have to protect the middle class, even those who are in the lower-middle class, they have been already hit hard, and I would assume that we can do something about modifying. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, do you want to start?
Sure. One of the things that I'm concerned about, Madam Chair, is if the department could come forward, and if there's an appropriate representative from Recreation and Parks. One of the concerns I have is, in the San Fernando Valley, everybody's well aware, that's probably the hottest region of the city. And, for example, last week, I think we had pretty consistent days where we were over 100 degrees in the San Fernando Valley. And then when you look at the East Valley, which is the majority of my district and where I grew up, hello, Mr. Muckrey, who grew up in Pacoima as well, it's really a sandy area, so, and on the west side of the valley, tends to be more of a clay-based, which retains- which retains water a little bit longer for our root systems. In the East Valley, we tend to have, the water dissipates through much quicker because it's a lot of sandier soil. So, as a result of that, I started noticing recently, in the last few weeks, that my parks are getting drier and drier, and my parks are, they're, we're having more and more large areas of dirt, areas where there used to be grass. And being someone who's attended to vegetation for a good part of my life, I understand that sometimes you might have some vegetation or grass that actually looks yellow, but it's not dead. It's still surviving, it might be a little dormant, and it comes back. But what I'm afraid of right now is that, based on what's going on in my district, in the San Fernando Valley specifically, we have vegetation and grass in our parks that if it continues, because we're at the beginning of summer, if it continues, we're gonna probably have to spend a bunch of money someday to go ahead and replace it or replenish that So, I want to know, what, what did the department take into consideration when they structured their, what is, we're in phase three, correct? Water conservation? We're in phase three, right, gentlemen? Phase three?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're now at the phase three water conservation, which is basically X number of minutes a week, and then two days out of the week that people need to, should be confining their, while watering a vegetation and during certain hours of the day, correct?
Yeah. Jim McDaniel's Senior Assistant General Manager for the Department of Water and Power. You're correct, we are in phase three. Phase three is two days a week of watering, Mondays and Thursdays. Under, under the basic part of the ordinance, there's no watering in the middle of the day, so the watering has to be done before nine or after four in the afternoon, and then there's limits on how long each sprinkler station can run.
And was there any exemption or provision made for systems that perhaps are more modern, or systems that might have some type of technical advantage where they increase the efficiency or appropriateness of when to water, et cetera? Or it's pretty much basically a blanket, twice a week, X number of minutes, X amount of volume maximum, we can do certain hours?
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't so much address volume as the, the total application time, if you will. There was, in the original ordinance, there was a distinction made for a certain type of rotary sprinkler head, and some of the irrigation technology has improved in the, in the amendments that we are, in the process of preparing to address some of the, some of the problems with the emergency ordinance. We're trying to address that sprinkler head for, for newer technologies. And I know you had questions about it, and I'll answer whatever questions you had. I just want to make the distinction, because some people in the audience get confused between the emergency ordinance and the, and the rate ordinance. So the rate ordinance was, was what was on the agenda today, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you. So, Department of Recreation and Parks, how is this affecting you, especially in areas like the San Fernando Valley, where we do have consecutive days of 100-degree weather, and we're probably gonna, I'll go ahead and predict, having lived my entire life in the valley, we're probably gonna have a few, at least a dozen, a couple of dozen days between now and through September, where we have triple-digit temperatures?
Correct. Councilman John Muckrey, General Manager, Recreation and Parks. With me, I have Ramon Barajas, who's Superintendent of the Valley Region. In the audience, I have Dana Valdez, and Kevin Regan, both are heading up our smart irrigation team. First, I want to let you know what we have been doing with the Department of Water and Power. We've been working with the Department of Water and Power since the inception of the drought ordinance. Now, it's unfortunate that we had to cast a very broad net on water conservation. I will tell you right now, before we get into specifics of what we're seeing in stresses, the Department of Water, I mean Recreation and Parks currently is 43% less water usage than we were two years ago. Year-to-date, last year, and we are 23% below what we used. And we've done this through a number of innovative and new techniques. We've taken out 26 watering days out of 365 days. We're using reclaimed water wherever we can, thanks to the Department of Water and Power, specifically the Jim McDaniel, who we've been working closely. And then we put in the smart irrigation. Smart irrigation is the technology I think you're referring to, where we use computer, we use computer watering systems that takes into consideration the environment of the ground, and also what's going on in the atmosphere. So, we, these, this technology works. It's demonstrated work. If we allow it to work, meaning it waters when it has to, there's a guaranteed 20% reduction in water. What we are doing now, because of the emergency ordinance, we are restricting that to two days a week. Get to your specific question, it's not just what's happening in the San Fernando Valley. I did grow up in Pacoima, as you know. We are seeing stresses throughout every single park in the, in the city. That is something I could not predict. We predicted that the valley would see it first, and you're correct. Just because of the sandy soil conditions in the East Valley, there is not enough water retained, if, we might as well not water any days of the week, for what the two days doing. As you go to west, it is a more clay surface, the water is retained a little bit more, but two days a week doesn't do it. You can go right down through your district in Hollywood, all the way down to San Pedro. We're gonna lose parks right now. The, the grass is dying even as we speak. Now, we, we've, we've been working with the Department of Water and Power, we're not asking to be excluded from the water ordinance. As I've told you, we just, we're saving water. What we're asking, that we modify that, perhaps go on a water budget. In that case, we will work with the Department of Water and Power, I can guarantee this, this body and the Department of Water, we will save 20 to 25% water and keep the parks green. Now, there's two, two sides to this. It's not just the water we put on the ground. That's important, we should do that. But we're also working with the Department of Water and Power on water retention. So on those days of the, a year where it does rain, we want to use our parks to retain that water and replenish the aquifer. So we're trying to do a full cycle on that. I will tell you, one thing is that, we were talking about turf, which is important, but our trees are dying. Our trees are stressed. We have an urban forest, we don't have a natural old growth forest. So, the root system is not seeking groundwater, it's, we've been artificially watering it for years. We lose these trees, we're losing 50, 60 years of growth. And not all of us in this room knows how important our trees are to the air, the quality of air and the heat sink in the city. So what I'm, what I'm telling you now, and I've told the Water and Power this, we want to work on the modifications, the amendments, we want to participate in water conservation. I believe the city of LA, Department of Recreation and Parks is the national leader right now in this effort. And then we can talk about how many kids we're gonna hire to put to work, to put in the systems that are gonna be legacy systems. So it's not just a one-year deal. What we're doing is for the next 50 years, positioning ourselves to continue to save water, because I know poor Jim down at the end of the table has got to fill that bucket up somehow at the, at the end of this time. So we're, we're, we want to participate, we want to keep our parks green.
Thank you. Now, one thing I'd like to have the department clarify, when it came to the phase three, what was the, the objective, or the hope, or the expectation of how much decrease in water consumption we were expecting?
We, we were targeting a 15% reduction in water.
15% reduction in water?
Correct.
So what I'm hearing from the Department of Recreation and Parks, that if they were allowed to utilize their systems, their smart systems, that they're guaranteeing that they would be reducing their water consumption by 20%. So that in effect would actually meet the objective of the phase three, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know, I know it's not as simple as that, but at the same time, I'd like to submit for the record, Madam Chairwoman, some language and recommendations of how we could go about still meeting the objective of getting past the 15% reduction in water consumption at our parks, yet at the same time, not put in jeopardy, which I believe is happening right now, put in jeopardy the actual plant life within our parks, which isn't just an aesthetic issue, that's actually the tool of the park. For kids to be able to play soccer and baseball, or whatever it is they do, or picnic, or what have you, the idea is that the grass isn't just about aesthetics and looking green. The grass is actually the tool that they use to make sure that the parks are utilized and enjoyed by the public, the owners of the parks. So, I want to submit this to the committee so that we could incorporate that into our process, and hopefully we can, as expeditiously as possible, get this hopefully rectified to where DWP still has their objective met, which is to reduce consumption at least by 15% across the board, and that the parks and recreation of the city of Los Angeles can actually meet or exceed that, yet at the same time, not jeopardize the tools that they have of their trade, which is the actual greenery on their parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. I think what we're going to do, and I think your ideas, your recommendations, or your requests or motion is very good, and I want to include that as part of the record and affirm you in that. And I think what we're going to do, since this is such a massive undertaking, and I don't, I'd like to continue it and ask if you could find at least one more hour for us to go through this before a council meeting in the next week or so, so we can focus just on this item alone.
Okay.
And please incorporate what Mr. Cardenas has just said, as part of the record, so then when we're at the end of it, we can go through everything and summarize and make sure that it's accurate.
Madam Chairwoman, so you're keeping the objective of trying to get this to the council floor by sometime next week?
The 21st.
Oh, the 21st?
Yeah.
Which is next week?
Uh, yeah, okay.
Next Friday?
Wait, what is it?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
A week from today.
Your next, today's 14th, your next regularly scheduled meeting is the 21st. There is no time limit on this, although there is urgency because of the exemptions that are in it.
Right.
Keep in mind as well, that the wrecking parks component is in a board ordinance, or an ordinance being considered by the board next week on the 21st.
Okay.
You may want to wait until that comes as well, so you can move both this action and that ordinance jointly to the council as well.
What time is the board?
They meet at noon next Tuesday as well. We meet, of course, at 9:00 AM, so...
And we can't placeholder anything from the board until actually they took the vote? Then we can placeholder, we can't placeholder it in the council?
Yes.
Okay.
So we could actually, as early as next Fri- Friday?
Have the vote come.
Fourth or fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah, have it all together.
All right. Well, I think we need just at least one hour, and I think we should be able to knock this one out in an hour, but I don't want to pair that up with anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
One of the questions that was asked is, what happens now? Can we go forward? Can we save the turf? Ramon Barajas is an expert in turf management, and I'd like him to answer the question, when we have to start this effort? I know that there is an ordinance, I know there's timelines, but Ramon is the expert. So when would we have to start watering to save?
We would have to start, Ramon Barajas, Superintendent for the Valley Region, we would have to start watering right away. As it is, we already lost our cool season grasses. But right now, we have a lot of Bermuda and cucuya grass in our parks, and that, if we start watering it right now, that'll come back. But we still have to reseed, because we lost all our cool season grasses, but we, we need to start watering as soon as possible.
So are you, are you indicating that if we act on it, on all of this by next week, that's still not, that's still, that's too late then, right? Is that what you're saying?
We expect, the latest state advisory that we received shows that we're gonna be 100-degree weather starting almost today. And we will take every effort to adhere to the ordinance. Obviously, we have Thursday...
Why don't we ask the city attorney to come up here and tell us what our, what our options are with respect to potential...
The particular component of the watering of the park?
Yeah, right.
The particular component of watering of the parks, right, Madam Chair?
Right. Yeah, only limited to that.
David Hoshkas, Assistant City Attorney. And just let me remind you, and I think it's been stated already, that there are two entirely different components that we're dealing with here. The rate ordinance is what has been brought in today with certain exceptions that are going to be intended to help people that are low-income and people with medical needs. And there's also, was a request from the council to deal with large animals in certain parts of the city. We'll put that aside for a moment, and we'll swi- switch over to the other issue, which is the drought ordinance, which has been referred to as the emergency ordinance. On its face, it, it has certain built-in sanctions for violations of the drought ordinance. Built into the regulations are also a specific authorization for the Department of Water and Power to address unique issues that deal with public health, safety, and welfare. It is my opinion that the maintenance of the city parks for the public health, welfare, and benefits that flow from the children and other folks having access to the parks are an integral part of the municipal experience. And so the department has within its discretionary power to, in essence, authorize the emergency watering of the parks to meet the situation, to maintain them for public access and benefit. And I, I think that I would not be stepping beyond the realm of reason to advise my client, both this body and the client, the Department of Water and Power, that they have this within their authority to grant literally an exemption at this time to deal with the unprecedented situation that we're dealing with.
Is that an administrative action, or would it have to be a vote of the, the board?
It, it's fully within the discretionary power, under the ordinance, for the Department of Water and Power to, to address that public health, safety, and welfare issue. It is no different, in my opinion, than the built-in exception in the ordinance for the department to not impose the restrictions when someone finds, well, let's, for instance, let's assume that there's been an accident or an injury, and there's blood on the sidewalk, and for public health reasons you wish to wash it off, or there's other organic material you wanted to wash off a sidewalk, perfectly lawful under the ordinance. To add water to the, to the parks, to deal with as necessary to, to, to meet the situation, I think also for this is a public health, safety, and welfare exception.
Okay. But, but with all due respect, just one clarification, please, Mr. City Attorney, and that is, and as far as you can tell, as you described, if the department interprets your recommendation as you just described, is that the kind of thing with a letter from somebody high up in the department, or is it a process of discretion of the department that has to go to a vote of the board?
It would not require a vote of the board, it would be a discretionary call for department management, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. What, see, therein lies, where'd that, that guy go?
Me, the PA guy?
Yeah. But, but see, but see, that's the thing, but see, that's the thing, when, all joking aside, the administrative actions or what have you, that's not the kind of thing that the council can instruct them to do on this particular item, they have to interpret it on their own and go ahead and decide if they're gonna act, right?
Mr. Cardenas, the, the, the city council, as the legislative body for the city of Los Angeles, can certainly articulate its position and recommendations to the Board of Water and Power, and, and the Board of Water and Power can take that into its consideration of the situation that they're facing and the exercise of their discretion. So that's a long-winded way of saying that I don't think they're going to ignore you.
Yeah, but, but you're talking about the board, but what I'm...
No, 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 I'm talking about the department.
Oh, the department, as an administr- as administering their day-to-day.
They have an obligation to manage the, the water assets of the city under the policies and protocols adopted by the board. The policy of the board has been articulated when they recommended the creation of this ordinance. The policy of the council was set forth when it passed that ordinance. The ordinance has built into it an exception policy, if you will, and that exception policy sits on the shoulders of the, of the water executives in the Water and Power Department. Now, the water executive...
The water executive.
Who's that person? The water executive may be overruled by his, by his...
He has manager.
He has a boss. I have a boss. I have a nice boss, a new one. But...
Your boss go away?
I beg your pardon.
He has a new boss.
I have Mr. Krutanich as a new boss.
Oh, oh.
So I'm, I'm still a little, I'm still a little giddy about having a new boss.
Okay. Oh, you're giddy, okay.
Yes.
He seems nice, though.
He does seem nice.
Yes.
And, and, and I'm sure he's not gonna contradict what I'm saying today in terms of water policy. So, to recap, Mr. McDaniel has the authority to, to authorize an exemption here, he has, he has the, the potential of being overridden by his general manager. And I suppose, in, in theory, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners at its next meeting could ask to be briefed on this issue, and countermand that as a matter of policy. But I'm suggesting to you that the situation that has been described here today, in, in the opinion of a lawyer for the city of Los Angeles, demonstrates the situation where the policy for a potential exemption to meet public health, safety, and welfare issues could be met with by allowing additional water to be applied to the parks.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, Mr. McDaniel's any comment on that?
I knew today was gonna be an interesting day when I walked out.
In all seriousness, I wouldn't want you to, I wouldn't put you on the spot and ask you to opine about your boss, but what I'm saying is, based on what you heard from the department and the fact that...
Oh, I think she asked him.
Yeah, 15. He's getting red.
On a basis of the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution, I'd advise my...
But, but, but based on the objective of the phase three which we're in, which is to get to an objective of, of at least 15% conservation, and the department saying on the record that the systems that they have on certain parks or what have you is creating an efficiency of 15%... is creating an efficiency of fifteen percent, all they're asking for is an ability to operate within that, and then to have the flexibility so that they don't have continuing grass die, and, and trees or what have you, and then, you know, we're gonna have to replace them later in another fashion. So rather than, than allow that to happen with temperatures, as the forecast says, today a hundred degrees, tomorrow very likely a hundred degrees, and ongoing, what, what I would like to ask Madam Chairwoman, is that we instruct the appropriate party within the department to speak to the head of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and to, to look at the language that they would recommend that you consider, to give them that opportunity to do it immediately. Understand as well, that at the council level, we're gonna continue to have the dialogue, and perhaps fine-tune, or as the city attorney said, maybe we overturn it, we change our mind, or what have you. But for the sake of what was presented today, what we'd like to see happen is to allow them to operate within that structure. They've said on the record that they're, they are, they have created a system that gives twenty percent efficiency reduction, excuse me, of consumption, and they can operate within that and save what they have to save in our parks that are, that are in danger of losing some of their, their grass and trees, et cetera. So if you could do that, please start to do that. I will also let the, the head of the Department of Water and Power know what we asked of you today, and then so that there's full disclosure, that we're not just putting you on the spot, that we are respectful of the fact that you do have a department to run, and that we're more than happy to continue to dialogue with them, but time is of the essence.
Understood.
Okay. So why don't we do, take care of that item today, and then we're gonna continue the rest, that particular issue today, and then we'll continue the rest, and then the CLA and the clerk will notify everyone as to what date we can pick off next week, but I guess we have to do it next week, the twenty-first, and then we'll have that as a single agenda item, so we can finish that within an hour. We'll probably do it before a council meeting.
For the record, I believe the Board of Water and Power Commissioners is meeting on the twenty-first in San Pedro.
Oh.
And I think a number of people here will be obligated to be present at the board meeting.
Okay, he'll figure it out.
He'll figure something out.
Okay. That is, now we have two public comment cards. Dr. Williams is busy today. Are you still here, Dr. Williams? And then Jack Humphreaville, come on up. Mr. City Watch, come on up. You need to put more pictures in your newsletter.
Do you like a picture?
No, 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 do, put a picture of yourself in there, I don't care. I just need more visual entertainment. I'm getting tired. I'm getting loopy. That's right. Okay, Dr. Williams.
Number four?
No, you're on, no, you did four, you're doing public-
What happened to four?
This is public comment.
No, just general public comment.
You're trying to double-dip on me. All right, this is the portion of the agenda for items that are not on the agenda, public comment period. So there's just two public comment cards.
Basically, the same thing. The DWP has had a very poor record on outreach to anyone, as demonstrated by the fact that they presented to their board a variance procedure. And the board said, take it back, we don't want variance procedures because we're having problems applying these rules. That's correct. They have not provided the neighborhood councils with much information at all. They don't like the neighborhood councils, and I always remind people, outreach means that you gotta get out of your building and go to the community, to reach the community. The neighborhood councils try to do this. However, we have conflicting ideas. On one of your agenda items for today, renters. In our area of El Sireno, we have a tremendous number of renters. They don't know what is going to come. They don't know what is going to come until this month, when they get the bill. So we have a lot of confusion, and DWP has not provided appropriate outreach for the neighborhood councils and to their users, even the billing systems. So, I, I don't know what to do. Sometimes I think it's just a matter that they need to get out to the neighborhood councils. They don't like being kept to the end of the neighborhood council meetings and being given ten minutes, much like the public is given in DWP board meetings. So, let's go home.
Those who have been oppressed become the oppressors. Mr. Humphreaville, yes.
I'm not sure where the, that all follows. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment again. One is, you know, the outreach by the Department of Water and Power in developing an out, developing a plan for outreach to neighborhood councils. I would also like to say, and part of that, when we talked in late March about this, is we also wanted to make sure that we were gonna have some input into the solar plan as they're, as it's being contemplated. Right now, it's my understanding that there's been a lot of planning going on. We haven't heard boo from anybody about anything, nor has, nor has the third party of the governance authority heard anything about it. But we're gonna be talking about the solar program, which is about three and a half billion dollars. Mr. Ray stands behind his comments, as he indicated in the IEA, IEA survey. We're talking about a three and a half billion-dollar program, and maybe much more, to be managed by a department that has managed to build only one megawatt over the last year, despite having the mandate for forty megawatts, at a cost of ten dollars a watt. At ten dollars a watt, we're talking four billion dollars. Nobody denies the need for solar power. I mean, we're, I think everybody's in favor of that, whether you believe in global warming or climate change, or energy dependence on, energy independence, there's a whole lot of reasons. But we'd like to be able to see what we're gonna, what we're gonna have to buy. I also understand that the department has not talked to any of the trade unions. Obviously, the trade unions were great friends of the Noon Measure B part. There's a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand trade union members in the greater Los Angeles area. They need work probably more than anybody these days, given, given what's happened to the construction industry. So we ask you, in your role as overseers, as partial, or third-party overseers or part of the overseeing group, to, you know, make sure that the DWP includes the neighborhood councils, the ratepayers, both industrial, commercial, and residential, in this equation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further cards for public comment, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.